Okay, I'm gonna go. I call the November 19th, 2018 Belvedere City Council Regular Meeting to order the clerk will call the roll.
Borowitz, Brooks.
Here.
Crawford.
Here.
Frank.
Here.
Freeman.
Here.
Porter.
Here.
Radcliffe.
Here.
Sanderson.
Here.
Snow.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Nine present.
Thank you. Please stand for pledge allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we appreciate your presence and guiding hand as we meet to do the work entrusted to us by our community. We are a community of strong faith, moral action, and traditional values, ever open to finding the best path for our people through you. Guide us to make wise and fair decisions. As we celebrate our National Thanksgiving later this week, let us not forget that there are those that lack the basic necessities like food, clothing, and shelter. May we recognize our fellow citizens' needs and find constructive ways to help those in direst circumstances. Help us to recognize and appreciate our bounty and share our blessings. In your name we pray, amen. Now if you'd please join me in a moment of silence for our fellow citizens who have gone to their reward recently and offer our sympathy and condolences to their families. Sheila Cordash, Robert Zarlanga, John Howard, Vincent Pelosi.
Thank you, please be seated. Welcome, everyone. First up, under public comment, we had, Sherry Branson had registered to speak, but it looks like she's skedaddled. So I guess she won't speak to us this evening. Next up, we have approval of minutes of the regular meeting of the Belvedere City Council of November 5, 2018 as presented. May I have a motion to approve these minutes? Alderman Brooks with the motion. Alderman Porter, second. Questions, comments, or proposed amendments to the minutes as presented? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of minutes, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Brooks.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Radcliffe.
Aye.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Borowitz.
Aye.
Ten in favor.
Minutes are approved unanimously. Under public hearing this evening, we have none. Under special messages and proclamations, just would share with you that tomorrow evening between four and seven, I believe, the Salvation Army will be serving their Thanksgiving dinner. Notice, you know, it's Christmas time, you see the red kettles out there, and I would urge all of you, when you go walk past them, if you've got a little something you could put in there to help out unfortunate people, they do an awful lot of good things in our community. We have Thanksgiving coming up, and I would wish everybody and their families a wonderful Thanksgiving. Enjoy the time spent with those closest to you. Okay, under special messages and proclamations, further, we have nothing to report, and under number seven, approval of expenditures, we have quite a few expenditures, general and special fund expenditures totaling May I have a motion to approve? Motion by Alderman Snow, may I have a second? Second by Alderman Radcliffe. Questions, comments concerning any of the expenditures in this month's general and special fund expenditures, yes?
Could Becky give us some insight on the large number, because we usually don't have a three million by?
She's sure cat, Ms. Tobin.
I can do that. I was gonna do that under my little spiel later, but I'm happy to do it now. Out of that number, this was an expensive month, 1.3 million goes to fire and police pensions. So those payments will go out this week. Also, our liability insurance was paid, so 452,000 of that from the general fund is our annual liability insurance, and then water and sewer covers the rest of that expense.
Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Radcliffe.
Aye.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Borowitz.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Ten in favor?
General and special fund expenditures are approved, which brings us to water and sewer fund expenditures in the amount of $932,253.30. May I have a motion to approve? Motion by Alderman Sanderson, second by Alderman Brooks. Questions or comments concerning any of these expenditures? Hearing none, all those in favor, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Radcliffe.
Aye.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Borowitz.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Water and sewer fund expenditures are approved unanimously. Please note, under number eight, items A through H have been received and placed on file, and our finance, financial director, Becky Tobin, would like to address the monthly treasurer's report. Becky?
The only thing I wanted to mention was, we had talked about the local motor fuel tax last month, and I just wanted you to be able to see the revenue from our first month of receiving that. You'll notice a new line item on the first page of the income statement for the general fund. Says local motor fuel tax. Last four digits, 40113. You'll see for month of October, it says 47,941. We had two payments that came in after the end of September, they came in the beginning of October. So the total from your 16 gas stations for the month of September was actually $52,826.78. So I'm impressed and happy with that number. They may not always be that high. Being September, that also included Labor Day weekend, things like that, but I'm optimistic that we're gonna see some good revenue from this. That's all I have.
Good news is good news. Which brings us to item I, minutes of the committee of the whole, building, planning, and zoning and public works of November 13th, 2018. May I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Crawford, second. Second by Alderman Brooks. Questions, comments, or proposed amendments to the minutes as presented? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of minutes, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Freeman.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Radcliffe.
Aye.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Borowitz.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Minutes are approved unanimously. Brings us to number nine, unfinished business. We have a second ordinance, a second reading of ordinance 431H. An ordinance authorize, oh, excuse me, the author, authorization for the sale of municipal parking lot. This was tabled November 5th, 2018. Someone want to remove this from the table? I have a motion.
I'll second that.
Motion is second to remove. All those in favor, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Porter.
Aye.
Radcliffe.
Aye.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Borowitz.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Unanimous vote to remove it from the table. Where were we when we put it on the table? Are we gonna start again with a
Very good motion is second, I believe.
Motion. We have a motion is second? Okay, open it up for further discussion. Alderman Stevens?
Well, I see here that to replace the pavement, we're looking at 144,000. And then there's gonna be lights and all that, so the 60,000, I think, is still a little bit on the cheap side to get rid of this. And we don't know whether this guy's gonna be here, you know, in business a year, two years, 10 years. I hope he stays in business for a long time. I'm still not really in favor of getting rid of the parking lot entirely. I'd rather make a motion that we lease this to the gentleman for $1,000 a year so that he can do the improvements that he wants, but the city still has the ultimate owner of it.
Are you offering that as an amendment?
Yes, I am.
I have a motion to amend. Do I have a second? Motion is second. All those in favor? Open discussion. Ms. Tobin?
Courtney with Rally Appraisal is here tonight. He's the commercial appraiser that has done, did this property for us, so if there's any questions, he is here.
Okay. Mr. Anderson?
Just a point clarification for everybody. Alderman, in your packets, there was a, I put together a short little memo with a little bit of history back to parking lot number two, what it consists of, the work that we have done in the recent past, and also, as Alderman Stevens alluded to, the new parking lot construction. That new parking lot construction number, that's all in, so that includes your pavement, your base, your storm drain, that's the typical cost for a complete construction. If you were to buy an empty piece of ground and turn it into a parking lot, that's what that number represents. It's not just for overlays or blacktop or a portion of it, that is what the number is. Is the current number that is used to determine costs for parking facilities.
Well, and we're not, that's not talking apples to apples. We're not buying a brand-new parking lot, number one. Alderman Snow?
And I would get, be in favor of selling this, because at this point, by not selling it and leasing it, I don't know what the tax implications are as far as putting it back on the tax roll. And if and when he improves it, and now that he's gonna have a parking lot that's worth $60,000 fair market value, now he's gonna get taxed on that, plus whatever improvements he puts on it. Where if he leases, I think that becomes kind of a gray area, whether or not we wind up getting property tax revenue from that, because now it's not it's generating revenue for the city, and I know the other entities have issues with that. So I would be in favor of not approving the leasing option and just maintain it to 60,000.
Mr. Crombie is here also, who is the one that would be purchasing this from us, and there was a memo put into your packets that he, as he agreed in the beginning, will pay the closing costs for the appraisal. Mr. Adrella, what is the situation if it were leased? Would it go back on the property tax rolls?
The leasing option creates a lot of issues, frankly. And certainly, the city's had the power to lease property. They do it from time to time. You see, for example, with stadiums and things like that, where they might lease the property to a sports team, to utilize property in a senior stadium, things like that. The problem you have in this situation is you've got a parking lot that's currently publicly-owned parking lot. If it's only gonna be used as a parking lot, there's zero incentive for the property owner to lease the property. Why would he lease a property that he can use for free right now? I assume one of the purposes of owning the parking lot is to lock it up and make sure he has easy access to his building, perhaps use it for other purposes in the future, portions of it for other purposes in the future. If we were to lease the property to him, that lease would probably forestall any other uses for that property, because we can't predict what the liability would be on it unless we have a very clear picture of how it'd be used, which opens up the other Pandora's box on it. If we lease it for his sole use, as opposed to keeping it as a generally-owned parking lot, we, as the owner, incur additional liability that we don't have currently. And certainly, we can require him to indemnify and defend us and add additional insurance to his insurance policy, but nonetheless, we're creating additional liability for ourselves that we just frankly don't need, especially in light of the previous recommendations from the Public Works Director, that frankly, this parking lot's just not used by any other establishments in the area other than the person that wishes to purchase it.
And Mr. Crombie has agreed that he's not gonna tell anybody they can't park there. So, you know, it So would it be fair to say that your amendment states that has opposed, the amendment would be to lease the parking lot at what, $1,000 a year? Is that what the figure you're coming up with?
I don't know what a good fair figure is. I thought $1,000 would be definitely low enough for him to think about it, because we already have the liability for any injuries that were, would be incurred in there, because we're a public entity.
So
Well, not if we don't own the property, we don't.
Yeah.
Alderman Brooks?
Won't be long there, and we'll be the biggest landowner in Belvedere. We've got all these parking lots. We've got the Leaf Building sitting on a beautiful riverfront down there that nobody wants. You can't even give it away. And we're up here talking about taking a parking lot that can go back on the tax rolls. It can be a use of use to a, to a local businessman to expand his business. And I don't know what we're even talking about this for. This is, this is a no-brainer to me. A man wants to buy the parking lot at a reasonable price, sell it to him. We got parking lots across the street from his place. We've got the Leaf Building. Let's talk about selling that and getting somebody in there. Let's talk about something meaningful. Instead of making a local businessman jump through hoops to get what he wants, to get his business expanded a little bit where he's got parking for his customers. I mean, come on, Jesus, that thing's out there vacant forever. Nobody wanted it. Now that a guy wants it, nobody wants to give it to him. It's ridiculous. I think we ought to bring it to a vote right now, Mayor, and, and give the man the property.
Alderman Porter, you have a comment?
Well, I just, I think it's, the leasing seems to be a better option. I mean, they made a big deal about the historic Manly Building, you know, tearing that down for a parking lot, because they really needed parking. Now they want to sell a public parking lot, which I really think we need, you know, for future expansion. And he does have, like I said, he has use of it right now.
Well, I think I need to correct your understanding. The Manly Building was not torn down because we needed parking. The Manly Building was torn down because Ford said that they either had to move out of that location and build a new dealership, move out of town. So we had an opportunity to buy it at a discounted rate and have the form, the owner take care of all the EPA issues with it and so forth. It was really meant so we could keep the second oldest Ford dealership in town and to get a two-for. In other words, we would have had two empty dealerships. They would've gone away, and Wolf Chevy would've remained empty too. So it was not about getting space for a parking lot. That was the last reason that we entered into that transaction. Alderman Crawford?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I agree with Alderman Snow and Alderman Brooks. I'm for selling it too, because for years, you could drive by there, there's not a car in that parking lot. Now it's loaded with cars, you got a good business going on, and that's the only one that can really use it.
Alderman Snow?
And to echo that is the fact that if you try to lease it, let's just say it changed hands, probably within the last five years, from Bush Gardens opening, and now it's Coach's Corner. Again, leasing it only gives you a finite amount of time before that lease is broken, because A, the business fails and/or gets transacted to somebody else. Then the city possibly is saddled with whatever improvements that person made, that we gave them permission to make. I think selling it just gets the money in our pockets sooner, and we know right where we stand. He knows where he stands, and he can make improvements on that piece of property that are gonna make his business better and/or improve everything in the general area.
Okay, we have a motion to amend the original. Who? Marcia? Ms. Freeman?
I just had a comment too. I like viable businesses in Belvedere. Bush Gardens was dead for a very long time. I live on that street. You couldn't find a car in that parking lot for a long time. This particular business, parking lot is full, parking lot across the street is full. My own party waited an hour and a half for a table for some outstanding fish on a Friday night. I think this business is gonna remain viable, and I think we should work with this business owner.
Okay, so we have an amended, a motion to amend to lease the parking lot as opposed to sell the parking lot, lease it for $1,000 a month.
No, a year.
Oh, excuse me, a year. All those in favor, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Radcliffe.
Nay.
Sanderson.
Nay.
Snow.
Nay.
Stevens.
Yes.
Borowitz.
Nay.
Brooks.
Nay.
Crawford.
Nay.
Frank.
Nay.
Freeman.
Nay.
Porter.
Aye.
Two in favor?
Amendments lost. So we're back to vote on the original ordinance, second reading, and ordinance authorizing the sale of municipal parking lot. All those in favor? Alderman Sanderson?
Well, I agree to table this, because there are some questions, and I'm glad that we have the assessor here, about where he got the comparables, and so maybe we could hear from them, because
If you have a question, sure.
Yeah, you know, because what it looked like, I know Alderman Stevens mentioned that, that it looked like it was older parts of Rockford and other things like that, and if that's really comparable to fair market value for that area.
So since you'd like to know how I came about choosing this, you're gonna back up once I think you had asked about the tax rule. I did do a tax estimate, didn't you, Brenda?
You wanna come out up here to the podium? Come on down. Would you just state your name for the record?
Yep. My name is Courtney Prentice. I'm with Rally Appraisal. And I'm gonna pull up that tax estimate I mentioned to you real quick. I estimated the taxes, if it went back on the tax roll, at the sale price of $2,164.96. I came up with that based off small parcels that are being taxed within the downtown area on Whitney, 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 Lincoln, and Lincoln. And I came up with a tax rate per foot, and that's how that, so I know that is an estimate, of course, but $2,000 back on the tax roll.
And I guess the question was, you know, some, I guess at least one of the parcels there was an old, bad part of Rockford, a less, you know, not, not as well-income area as this area is in Belvedere. And that's what was brought up at the last meeting, that's why I agree.
Sure. Okay, so let's talk appraisal theory for a second, before we get into that. So you know, you've got a parking lot, so I'm looking for another parking lot in what we would consider a downtown-ish area. There's been nothing in Belvedere. As you guys know, you own parking lots. There's not been a parking lot that I could find in communicating with anybody about any sales, so then I've gotta expand. The one particular comp that you guys are probably worried out, worried about was the one on Kishawaki Street, which was my comp number two. Comp number one, which had the most weight in the appraisal, was the one on North Third Street in downtown Rockford. That is the one that they, the mobile station bought, that was in the news, where they just built the mobile station that was across from the Fran Crawl dealership, which ironically enough is very similar to you guys having torn down a Ford dealership, had a parking lot across the street. So that particular lot was honestly my biggest influence. I do have the other one on here that you were talking about. So because it was in an inferior location, we adjust for that. So it may have sold at 255 a foot, but by the time I got done applying adjustments, it came up to 306 a foot. So we tried to adjust for that location. I want to talk big picture for a second, if you'll let me continue. So what you're dealing with is a 19,000 square foot parking lot next to a business. What else is gonna use the parking lot besides you guys? We have to look at it from an appraisal perspective, is how likely is that to be developed in the next three to five years? Do you see a viable option? Is the market hot enough? Is the market strong enough? Do we see that it's gonna be developed? If the answer to that question, in our opinion, is three to five years, if it's not within the next three to five years, then it's gonna continue as a parking lot. So then you look at it as a 19,000 square foot structure. So let's say you guys want to sit on this lot for 10 years, just hypothetically. You've lost $2,000 a year in tax roll, and you've gotta find somebody who's willing to put up a very small building and have because of the footprint and the layout. To me, the only other viable option for that size lot is if you think somebody's gonna want to put a little car lot there. I don't see that happening, in my professional opinion. But, you know, so you're asking about the appraisal? I'll stop on the rest of the opinions about the subject. Go ahead, more appraisal questions.
Could I ask questions of Brent, then, while I got the floors? So how much does it cost maybe to, you know, manpower to clear, plow the lot in the wintertime in an average year, maybe?
Depends how much it snows.
Well, that all depends on how much snow, how often we are. I mean, obviously, it's gonna be, make our job quicker for that specific route, because that's one less parking lot that we've gotta plow, pile the snow, and then as, depending on how much snow we get, then we gotta haul the snow off to the snow, to our snow field, so it'll definitely save us time. It's hard to predict how much time. It all depends on what the snow event is.
So you think it'd take like a half hour to clear that lot up and manpower and then gas?
Probably on a typical basis, it would be probably a half hour's worth of time.
One plower for
An hour, thirty bucks.
Alderman Snow?
Certainly, there's avoided costs, but not only by plowing, but sweeping as well, maintaining, restriping, fixing tight holes, overlaying, as you can see what we've spent in the last, over the last 20, some 20 years there in maintenance costs of that lot as well.
Alderman Snow?
And this may not play any big role in the overall scheme of things, but right now, we were talking about in the future having the stormwater issue and taxing based on surface area being paved and that. So in this case, we as a city don't get taxed on that, but this brings it back into the pay, pay of the taxing portion when that comes in, that we're not missing out on that tax revenue for that. Not that that's gonna be a huge thing, but, you know, just another thing that the city will get money on that we wouldn't get anything on.
Additional questions or comments? Yes, Alderman Freeman?
So, big picture. We're looking at a parking lot that will never be anything but a parking lot, that the city is still going to be able to continue to use, that will generate us revenue, but we will not have to maintain it. Win-win.
Any additional comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of ordinance 431H, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
No.
Borowitz.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Radcliffe.
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Ordinance 431H is approved. Which brings us to number 10, new business, and thank you. We have one, two, three, four, five first readings. Typically, these are silent readings, and we will not discuss them, but I'll read them into the record for those folks that are listening at home. Ordinance 433H, a first reading is an ordinance amending Chapter 150 zoning ordinance in municipal code concerning animated signage in the NO, PO, and NB districts. Ordinance 434H, a first reading is an ordinance granting a special use permit Ordinance 434-H, a first reading is an ordinance granting a special use permit in animated sign within the neighborhood business district at 221 Locust Street. Ordinance 435-H, a first reading, an ordinance amending Chapter 150 zoning ordinance in the municipal code, a private residential coop. Ordinance 436-H, I didn't know it was co-op or coop, H, first reading, an ordinance granting a special use to permit in-vehicle sales or service when the planned business planned the business district, 2195 North State Street. And ordinance 437-H, a first reading, an ordinance granting a special use to allow indoor commercial entertainment, a bar with video gaming within the central business district at 105 Buchanan Street. Next, we have motions forwarded from the committee of the whole, planning, building, and zoning and public works of November 13, 2018. Motions will be presented by Chairman Brooks. Chairman Brooks?
Thank you, Mayor. We have a motion to approve the proposal from CES to complete the design and engineering for the Bellwood and High School detention projects in the amount of $38,750. This work will be paid for from capital funds.
Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor. Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the motion, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Borowitz?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Crawford?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Sanderson?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously.
Motion to, motion to approve the work authorization from CES Incorporated at a cost of $28,225 for design engineering of the Sixth Street low-flow channel. This work will be paid for from light item 01-5-751-8058.
Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor. Hearing none, all those in favor, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Stevens?
Aye.
Borowitz?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Crawford?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.